Thank you. Before we start our next work session, I would like to announce that we are going to take a meeting off of our calendars because at this point in time, we don't believe we need to have the public hearing on May 13th. We will only have the one on May 12th, yes.
All right.
Sorry, what did you say?
You wanted to do with us.
You're very disappointed. I don't feel that's the true -- a truth.
Truthful statement. All right, proceed ladies. Thank you.
Okay, welcome to the Human Resources and Budget Work Session. I'm going to ask staff to introduce who they've brought up here, right, and then you'll go through your entire presentation and then we'll have questions and discussion.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Quinn.
Oh, there comes Ms. Michael. So you all know Dr. Pajardo and Ms. Michael, but we also have two principals with us this morning, Kathy Bruce from Bonnie Bray Elementary School and Kathleen Case from Union Mill Elementary School. The principals are here with us today just to kind of share their perspective on our current process as well as the improvements that we're making and how that has impacted them or will have an impact on them this fall. We also have some HR and financial staff in the audience which I believe Kristin and Phyllis wanted to introduce.
So in terms of working on this project for staffing and class size, Matthew Norton from our Office of Budget Services is here. Also with him today is Michelle New and I just actually sent Alice Wiggington upstairs.
And from HR, you all know Kathleen Crenshaw who was sitting there, but she, I guess, went with Alice. She's our Director of Talent Acquisition and Management. This squarely falls in her bailiwick. And Naomi Martin has been our interim coordinator for instructional hiring. She's a former elementary principal here in the district, having been at Beechtree as well, and she's been hanging out with us for a few months. I'd also like to make sure we acknowledge Julie Fowler from the Chief's Office as well, who did some processing and assistance and herding in this as well.
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna -- we're gonna kind of share in the presentation this morning, so you'll hear from both Dr. Pajardo, Ms. Michael, and myself. So today's presentation, I want to start off by saying that the focus is really on the staffing process. And what we heard from the board at, I believe it was a work session in March, don't quote me on that, was that you wanted to hear how the staffing process worked and what we did to allocate resources from the staffing reserve as well as how the new class size regulation would impact the classes this fall. So that's where we will be focusing on today's presentation. We're also gonna share with you the timeline of this process and the hiring process enhancements that we've implemented for this year. And then last, we will go over the standards for the new elementary class size regulation and then conclude with where we're headed moving forward. Okay, so some of the improvement drivers. So why the change? As part of the premier workforce goal, we need to hire the top talent. And we have been hearing from the principals that our hiring timeline is little behind from other school districts. So one of the key changes that we've made this year was to compress and accelerate the timelines from updating projections and staffing to the hiring process. So we are hiring about two months ahead of schedule than we did previously. So this provides more opportunities to recruit the best and the brightest. And then we've also been hearing loud and clear about the large elementary class sizes in some of our schools. So we do have a new regulation that has also been posted in Board Docs, a draft form currently, that will address those large class sizes. Okay, now I'm gonna turn it over to Kristin Michael to kind of go over the staffing and the class size, how we're using the staffing reserve and the timeline for that whole process of allocating staffing and hiring our teachers.
So at the district level, the Office of Budget Services calculates staffing for each school twice a year. And that staffing is calculated based on the school board approved staffing formulas that are in place. So examples of how those staffing formulas are calculated and the staffing they allocate to an average elementary, middle, and high school are provided in our budget documents, when the proposed budget and the approved budget. So staffing formulas take into account various factors, including the school's total enrollment, the number and percentage of students eligible for free and reduced price meals, identified services for programs like English for Speakers of Other Languages and Special Education, and then additional factors like square footage and community use. So after the staffing is calculated, again, both in the fall and the spring, that information is provided to the Region Assistant Superintendents, Principals, and HR. Schools are given the number of kindergarten teachers, and then we also give them the total number of teachers for grades one through six. Then each principal needs to determine how to allocate that staffing across all of the grade levels to meet the individual needs of the students within their school. Principals also determine instructional groupings to serve the students across different grade levels. So the number of students at each grade level, additional programs like foreign language immersion and advanced academics also impact class size. Finally, I'll talk about in a little bit, with the Region Assistant Superintendent's approval, principals also have the ability to trade, which is also known as to reallocate resources. So for example, a school may trade two instructional assistants for a teacher, and I'll talk more about trades in an upcoming slide. So when we look at the staffing reserve, the staffing reserve is used to address variances between the enrollment projections and the actual student enrollment. So if a school's enrollment exceeds what was projected in the spring, if based on the actual number of students, the school qualifies for an additional teacher, right, then the staffing reserve is used to allocate that resource. The staffing reserve is also used to meet special education needs based on new students or changes to students' individualized education plan for special education. It's used to address large class size and also to address unique needs. For example, if there's a student with a significant medical condition. If a school has more staffing than they qualify for, historically, we have removed vacant teacher positions, but this year with our changes to the new regulation, we'll also review filled teacher positions when there's a variance between the enrollment projection and the actual enrollments. Finally, as part of the FY '16 budget, additional recurring funding of 3.1 million and one-time funding of 0.8 million was added to the reserve to specifically address large class sizes at the elementary level. I'm gonna turn it over to Phyllis.
Hey, thank you so much, Kristin. So you've heard from Susan and she shared with you that some things that we were doing before, we are still doing them, except we're doing them two months earlier. Two months earlier. Two months earlier. I'm saying that for effect.
And for effect, I might add. That was heavy lifting for our HR department. So Dr. Pajardo and her entire team, you know, we were making these changes and they had to really accelerate what they were doing to get ramped up for this process. So we really appreciate, Dr. Pajardo, your leadership and everyone in HR. We know that that was -- and really Financial Services too, because we had to move up everything, and I know that was a Herculean task. So we appreciate it.
Absolutely. I was gonna say, it takes help from a lot of friends.
Including facilities.
Absolutely.
Because we have to start with the projections. So we really compressed that timeline and that impacted everyone in the system that had anything to do with projections, staffing, and hiring.
Yes, facilities, instructional services, IT, all involved in this. It takes a village and it's taken a village as well. So let me just highlight a few of the enhancements that were made. Again, it's knowing that these processes normally do take place in HR and in the division as well. So our job fairs, we have typically had two job fairs each spring. We have continued to have those, but this time, we really concentrated on the critical fields, special education, ESOL, world languages, so that we could, again, get more folks into the pool in those critical areas. The staffing meetings with principals normally would be held late April, May, mostly in May, and this time, they were actually held in March as well. But all of that information that gets us to the -- gets HR to the table with the principals were available, as Kristin talked about it. We have already identified employees who are to be de-staffed. With few exceptions, those employees have been notified of their placement for next year. In a few cases, we are still working on that placement as well. But that has not prevented us from actually opening hiring for principals now. So our principals are able to recommend candidates from external in the division as well as, what, about a month ago, as I shared with you, some of our one-year-only folks, they have also been invited back as well. So I could go on and on about this, but I'd like to give Kathleen Case, and we have several Cathleens, here's Kathleen, 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 and Kristin, and Phyllis and Susan. We give Kathleen Case an opportunity to talk about some of the enhancements and her take on those positives as well as still question marks, given that this is a work in progress. Kathleen.
Okay, thank you. A couple of the things we wanted to share, and I like queried some colleagues around, just so this wasn't my perception, because the one thing we learned this year with Full Day Monday, and we're learning as we talk more, is every elementary school is very, very different. Your demographics are different, your staff is different, your community is different, your resources are different. So you have to put on multiple lenses to look to see what may be really a good fit at my school may not work at Kathy's school. And we, like I said, we did learn that a lot when we were looking at the Full Day Monday and looking at master schedules and that sort of thing. It is almost customized for each school. That said, we really did enjoy the fact that we knew where we were earlier in the year as far as what the predictions would be for our staffs, whether we were gaining staff, losing staff, because that gives you an opportunity to plan a little bit better. Our elementary schools are a little bit different once again from secondary because these children that we have will be spending the entire day, for the most part, with teachers, whereas at a middle school, you can use some of those electives and things to stockpile kids into classes, and your core classes can be a little bit smaller when you need to do that. We don't really have that luxury in the elementary school, so we really have to look at that. We were able to look at some strong candidates earlier. I know we're out there looking for new hires, early hires, those one-years, that we can offer earlier because if we're looking at other districts, that middle-of-June date that they need to let their contract, you know, their school systems know and have those contracts signed or committed to, we are able to play with that now a little bit more. So that has been helpful to get some really, really strong candidates. I think jury is still kind of out with schools with advanced academic programs, whether it's a local Level 4 or a center, because we don't have those hard and fast numbers, and you really never know how many are going to be offered enrollment into a center and how that impacts the community schools as well. Plus, you also have, if you are a local Level 4, how that impacts your grade levels as it is, because you will sometimes have to have -- well, oftentimes, you will have to have guests in those classrooms and that impacts as well. One of the things that I think has been a little bit difficult because it's new are those staff members that have been de-staffed. It's so early in the year to know that and to know you have to go somewhere else, and then if we have a change, then maybe they would be able to stay, but that option to stay at your school is probably not there at this point. So though, you know, that and I think looking at in the future, one of the things maybe, maybe we up the process for advanced academics, maybe we get more school input on what's in the pipeline for maybe some of our special education students, because although we would not predetermine, we have a sense of what we're looking at that if a school is within a few students, maybe that would be a grace period that you wouldn't de-staff right away, and that might be somewhere, you know, to look. So looking in the future, I think we'll have lessons to learn, but I think we also enjoy the opportunity to get some of those best and brightest that may have passed us by before with our deadlines.
Thank you. So moving into the staffing and hiring timeline, the process of staffing and hiring really occurs all year long, right, and throughout the school year, staff from multiple departments are actually working on multiple fiscal years at once. So when you look at the Departments of Facilities and Transportation, Financial Resources or Services, Human Resources, Information Technology, Instructional Services, and Special Services, they work collaboratively throughout the year on activities that ultimately result in staffing and hiring. And all of those departments work together. So I'd like to take the next few slides and just talk about what some of those activities are. So on Slide 8, looking first at January, February, and March. For the current school year, staffing meetings do continue through January, specifically looking at our special education students. Then, beginning in February, we continue to monitor special education, but typically, we're no longer hiring new teachers for the current school year. For the current school year, principals also, at the end of January, certify their current enrollment. That was as of January 31st. And that data is used by Information Technology to generate reports that then go out to all of the other departments who work on projections. So it goes to Facilities and Transportation, Financial Services, Instructional Services, and Special Services, Special Education, to develop those projections. So once we've completed all the enrollment projections, for the spring, that's the second time we've done this for the year, we update the square footage and also the community use, and then we're able to calculate staffing for every school. So when we look at this, at the spring timeframe, the variance between the staffing that we calculate in the spring is compared back to the staffing that we calculated in the fall for the proposed budget, and that adjustment is included in the approved budget agenda that we just saw, right. Then when we look at the final cost for that spring and compare it back to the prior year, that's the cost of enrollment growth from one budget to the next. So once staffing is completed, it's sent to the Region Assistant Superintendents, also to Principals and HR. And then HR begins the process of meeting individually with every single principal to go over what staffing they're allocated, what vacancies they have or see coming in the next year, for example, due to retirements, which employees need to be hired, and then if any employees need to be de-staffed. Also during this timeframe, we talk about the process for recruiting for critical fields and extending early offers. So examples of how those occur, if we're hiring additional teachers because a school is growing, then a school's going to hire more staff. But if a school's enrollment is going down or shrinking, they may need to de-staff a teacher. They may not -- no longer need a teacher that they have. So as we move into April and May, hiring continues. HR continues to meet with Region Assistant Superintendents and Principals. Schools now have the ability to hire those critical field candidates that were hired as early hire. And then this year, the process of transfer was expanded, so where teachers have the ability to apply for other teaching positions within the system. So this year, instead of it just being like-to-like, so a teacher applying for the same position in another school, teachers who are certified in critical needs areas could also apply. So for example, if you are currently teaching third grade, but you are certified as an English for Speakers of Other Languages teacher, you had the ability to go to transfer looking for an ESOL teaching position at another school. This year, the hiring was open to all schools in May, which, as Phyllis said, was two months earlier than what we've done in the past. So the process of moving all of these activities earlier, the projections, the staffing, the staffing meetings, transfer, all of those things happened due to the collaborative efforts of all of the departments and principals, as we look back to even certifying our enrollment, which is the very first step in calculating those spring projections. So in terms of June and July, hiring continues. HR continues to meet with Region Assistant Superintendents and Principals, working to ensure that all of our positions are filled. At the same time, Information Technology is going to roll our student information system over to the next year, right. After that system is rolled over, principals over the course of the summer will continue to enter any new students who register or release students who'll be attending another school, for example, to an advanced academic center. Then based on that data and the student information system throughout the summer, we'll monitor actual enrollment and provide HR with a report of the variances between what we had projected and the actual enrollment that we see. That data will be used for staffing meetings where we can then adjust the staffing as needed for schools. So as we move into August and September, enrollment becomes more certain, right. Staffing will be allocated to or taken from schools if there's variances between what we actually projected and their enrollment. In August, budget staff will also review the special education services that are included in students' IEPs, and will compare those projections to staffing as well. In previous years during this time period, we removed teacher positions from schools, so we're not qualifying for those positions based on their actual enrollment. And this year, we're actually going to review both filled and vacant positions through the 10th instructional day, and I know Phyllis will talk more about that. Finally, as we move into the end of the calendar year, October, November, and December, principals and their Region Assistant Superintendents will continue to monitor their class size. And then Human Resources, the Region Assistant Superintendents, and the Principals will confer to determine if we need to adjust their staffing or adjust their classes and instructional configurations to meet our new recommendations. Staffing meetings will continue to be held and we'll continue to monitor the reserve usage. So in the fall, projections are calculated for the proposed budget. Enrollment from September is used for those calculations. So as we head into the fall, we'll provide a report of our elementary class size as well as our reserve use to be incorporated with that information as we begin to develop the FY '17 budget.
Hey, so we've just gone through one year. I bet you're tired as well. So just a little joke there. So let's talk about the regulation that has been drafted, and I need to appropriately give some kudos to Marty Smith and the Region Assistant Superintendents as we have worked through this with them as well. So certainly to set standards around this information, we thought it was important that this be put into a regulation so that we could have appropriate guidance for all involved. Part of the regulation just sets the standards for elementary class sizes as well. And it also outlines how we will review this, our communication with our community around this. We have been working on this for a little bit. We have posted the latest version on the site for you to take a look at. So let me just highlight a few of the standards that we've previously discussed here, but I know, yeah, she's gonna -- I'm not having any luck with that, so we've -- I've turned it over to better hands as well. So.
Good thing this isn't the technology presentation.
That is a good thing. My fingers are not quite working right today as well. So we've shared this information with you before, and we want to give you a few more nuggets around it. So you know that we had no change in the standard for kindergarten, so that's first, alrighty. So for one through three, the standard will now be 27 students in each classroom. And as classrooms get beyond that, 27, 28, 29, 30, we would allocate an instructional assistant to provide support as opposed to reconfiguring a classroom. And when we're looking at a class of more than 31, that's when a teacher would be assigned, then a new classroom is started and configurations, and it's a new configuration altogether. As we look at four through six, setting the standard at 30 students, then you see the window, the 31, the 35 students, where an instructional assistant would be allocated to the school for use in supporting that larger class. And when the class in four through six would be above 30, at 36, then we would allocate another teacher so that the class could be configured and you'd have smaller classrooms again. Those things are, it seems very easy and simple to have it on paper, but the devil is in the details around how that works. We have schools that have already tackled things like this in terms of the assignment of an instructional assistant, reconfiguring a classroom, what that looks like and feels like. And I'd like to call on Ms. Bruce, and we did not injure her before she came here. This was a -- so Kathy, if you'll speak, please speak to some of the experiences you have had and thoughts going forward.
Sure. And yes, they did not twist my arm to get here. It is, it is a very daunting task every year to look at your projections and then reconfigure the, your staff to meet the needs of the students. And it is a lot deeper than just the number of students in the classroom. You really have to look at the very specific needs of each student in the classroom and then the teacher providing those instructions, instructional needs. So I have been the principal at Bonnie Bray for 10 years. In the majority of the years, I have had to reconfigure after school has started. In fact, eight out of those 10 years. So it is not new to me. And what I am excited about is being able to be supported in thinking outside of the box when I do do that, those reconfigurations. I have done this simple. I've been awarded another kindergarten teacher and started a new kindergarten class. That's pretty much your basic. And when I did that, it was an easy decision because it was easily 25 to 26 students in each one of those five classes. So that's very straightforward. Another year, I've been awarded a kindergarten classroom, teacher, and they come along with an IA, so it's a, it's a bonus, where if I had just reconfigured into five kindergarten classes, it would have left the classes to be 17, 15 students in each classroom, leaving my first grade, as I'm looking across the hall, at 27, 28, 29 students in a classroom, and I could not just do that simple. So I did a combo class of kindergarten and first grade, and it was a bonus because you had that extra IA in that classroom as well. So everybody, it was a win-win for both grade levels. I have received a upper-grade teacher for my four, five, fourth grade and my fifth grade that were sitting at about 33, 34 in a classroom. And instead of just doing a combination classroom, I took that new teacher who had the skills, and she provided language arts for fifth grade, language arts for fourth grade, and then did a combo math class, and then did extra support in math for those two grade levels in the look of like intervention, like a tiered intervention. And then pushed in for science and social studies and made sure that the teacher had enough adult support in the classroom to provide the necessary support for the kids. So there's a lot of different ways. It's not as simple as you're given a teacher for that high grade level. You really have to look over the entire school and how could I, biggest bang for your buck, for the support of the student needs. So it could look in a, it could look like a math lab, it could look like a language arts lab, because the draw of having 30-plus students in your classroom during a language arts block is how can I individualize my instruction for all of the needs in the classroom. And it takes a good 20 minutes for a guided reading lesson per group, and you don't really want more than four kids in, four to five kids in a group, depending on the level of reader they are. And depending on the level of reader, how many times a week. So if you can provide resources, for instance, a resource teacher, some principals will, will either trade or purchase a resource teacher. That resource teacher could provide that extra support for those students in your classroom that is pulling or needing more time with a certified teacher. And so I, too, have that, and I am proud to say that our reading levels that have been very low in the past, I've had students make two-plus years' worth of progress because of the resources that I have put into the school. Yes, some of our class sizes are large, but because those students that need the support are truly receiving the support, and I have the support of the staff, of the community as well, staff as well, but the community, and in fact, I've, knock on wood, have not had any complaints about the large classes. And so that's been wonderful because they've trusted we allocate our resources where they need to be. And then, as of this year, with the Monday, the Full Day Monday, we can rearrange our master schedule to support the needs of our classroom teachers to have the time for master schedule to support the needs of our classroom teachers to have the time for planning. Instead of adding just additional PE or music, some of us have gone outside the box and created either a STEM lab or a math lab. And we have a math lab, and so our students actually receive more math than they have ever received, which is fantastic. And in addition, that supports the classroom teacher. And I've been able to do that through purchase, reallocating those funds to my advanced academic resource teacher. So she's now at the school full-time, which I have a lot more play in her, her schedule to allow us to do not only the math lab by her, but she can also support those higher-level classes, or the high-numbered classes, by doing some pull-out remediation with math and doing some modeling in the classroom with the classroom teachers. So when we're talking about reallocating, you really look at the biggest impact you're going to make on the most students in your school, and that's also done with the instructional assistance, so.
Okay, thank you. I think you just heard many creative ways that we can address class sizes. Dr. Carso, were you going to say something?
No, I was just gonna say, both the principals, Kathleen and Kathy, both did, I think, a very good job of explaining, or at least demonstrating how complex this is, because every school's different, as you pointed out earlier, the needs of your schools are different. And that's why this gets really difficult, and we all just have to coordinate and really over-communicate. Because at the division level, the only way we can allocate is based upon enrollment projections and a formula, to be fair, right? So we just push it out by formula. How that translates into class sizes, there are so many things, in fact, so many factors that affect it. You know, it's the number of kids at the grade level, and that can change every year. Sometimes the math doesn't work, and I think Kathy kind of illustrated, sometimes the math doesn't work very well in terms of the division, right? Sometimes it's the unique programming that a school might have, such as AAP or immersion. Some of those factors affect it, and just educational needs of children, and the K3 state cap. So it gets very complex, but these two master principals, they have demonstrated very well how they take it, and they learn to figure out a way to really meet the needs of their school. So I thought, thank you all for being here.
So I'll just quickly go over the last slide. Just so moving forward, as you've heard, we've taken many important steps on improving our hiring process, as well as how we're going to be addressing some of our large class sizes. And in the process, we also have lessons learned. This is the first year with the new process, so we will be making improvements for next year. And in the fall, we are scheduled to provide a board with how, where the class sizes are and how we have used the staffing reserve to address those large class sizes. And then as part of the 2017 budget development, we will be evaluating staffing formulas and how they impact maybe on the other end, which are the small class sizes. And now, we could open it up for questions?
Thank you all very much. Appreciate all the comments and the work that went into the presentation, and thank you, principals, for being here. And with that, I will start with Mr. Stork.
Thank you. I have just really two issues, two questions, and I want to make sure I understand the de-staff process, how that works better, if you can maybe address that. And then, my second question, I'm usually gonna both out there, is, is on slide 16, if you can go back a slide, please. The last point in there, evaluate the staffing formula, is how they impact small class sizes. Just, I want to make sure I understand what, what the bullet point represents in terms of evaluating the staffing formula, if there's some broader evaluation or some more narrow evaluation, and if you could just kind of enumerate what that might be. Thank you.
So I'll take a few comments about the de-staffing process and how we get to it. So de-staffing is based upon the enrollment, the projected enrollment, where we have a number of staff that don't support what the enrollment is. It's actually a higher number of staff than what we are projecting the school to be at the next, for the next school year. So when that occurs, staff are identified for de-staff. Could be classroom teachers, most likely, classroom teachers. But we also have formulas that impact, that are based upon number of classroom teachers. So it could mean we could also have a half a less person in the office as a result, or a custodian as well, because those numbers and formulas are based upon staff as well. Some are based upon students, some are based upon staff. We then, when the principals come into the staffing meeting, we look at what their enrollment is, we look at what the projected enrollment is, and we say to them right at the table, looks like based upon this enrollment, instead of qualifying for 27 teachers, you now qualify for 25. We then look at the least senior teachers, unless there are some other overriding circumstances regarding this. If some of the senior, least senior teachers are in teacher leader positions, the principal, we do have some flexibility around going to the next person. But we do identify those, in this, in this particular example, the two teachers, they are notified that their enrollment for the next year does not look like it supports them being at the school. They have an opportunity to then participate in transfer if they would like, but we, as a district, have an obligation to place those folks in positions. And so we find other locations where they can go, and they are, and that information is shared with them.
So I've been in the system for, let's say, five years, and I'm still not as senior maybe as I might need to be. So now I'm in a situation where that, my particular school doesn't need my particular teaching skills. What is, what would that, give me that, and I don't, and that's not clear until, let's say, June or July. Help me with what that process looks like.
Well, you're looking at a de-staffed person herself. In my second year of teaching, I was de-staffed in August. I'd just gotten my letter from my principal saying, welcome back. Prior to the end of the school year, the principal did share that the enrollment was declining, and it was likely that I could be de-staffed, just as these principals do. But I got my letter, so I thought, I've got my letter, I'm going back to that school. And the very, within hours, HR contacted me to say, no, you know, you're not going to be at the-
With the sound effects included.
Exactly, absolutely. The sound effects were definitely there as well. But I, I can tell you, it was a scary moment for me in August. I lived in Reston, and I thought, I could be sent across the county regarding this. We do look at the location of where folks live. We do try to place them in geographically where they are as well, and it's through those conversations. So we can, in fact, share that pretty late on, like in August, in terms of the placement for folks. In my particular case, I was placed right down the street and could walk to the school as well.
So I guess I'm, part of what I wanted you to say, too, is, a key piece of this is that you are currently an FCPS employee.
Absolutely.
You expect to continue to stay an FCPS employee.
Absolutely.
And that there will be a teaching position, you know, as long as you're now a, a full-time, permanent, there will be another teaching position for you in our system.
Absolutely. That is, you said it better than I could've said it.
So the issue that's unclear is what happens at that moment, and then you may, it's feasible or potentially possible, you could start the school year without another classroom that you would be, already have been assigned to, because the process maybe doesn't catch up to your de-staff until a week or two or a month later. Give me some sense of-
So, one of the reasons that we do sometimes freeze the hiring in a particular area, for example, let's say it's art, and an art teacher is de-staffed. Even though schools could be hiring other art teachers, we need to wait to hire and open up art until we can place the particular individual. So even in unique circumstances, Mr. Stork and the rest of the board, because that person has been an employee with us, we would hold, and we then tell the person, it doesn't look like we have a placement right now for you, but there's going to be some shifts over the summer. It's guaranteed. It happens in our division every single year. So we say, your tentative placement stays at your school, but over the summer, we will notify you.
And I, I have, I mean, the follow-up to that would be, there's other, the principals do the hiring in our schools, and there's not a principal that elects to hire this particular individual, or at least would choose to hire this particular individual. Is there, is that just, I'm sorry, at some point in time, somebody needs to take that person on, or how does that work?
Yes, that's exactly how that works. We do, and our principals here probably have taken a de-staff. Okay, Kathy already has one. So yes, we have that conversation, because again, they're an employee, and they have certain rights to employment in our division.
And it's our number-one financial driver, you know, staffing. And so we have to be, and, yeah, best-case scenario, we'd never move people around, but every school system has to do this, because it's your, it's your, you know, almost 90% of our budget now is personnel cost, and so we have to do some of this throughout the process. But they do, are guaranteed a job, it can happen throughout, and the main thing is, our HR department and our, along with our principals, I think, provide a lot of support and encouragement. Whether they're leaving a particular school or being received at a particular school, I think everyone tries really hard to accommodate and either welcome them with open arms or help encourage them through that process. So it is difficult, but it happens everywhere throughout the system, throughout the nation, actually.
And then, just a second question I asked, if somebody could speak to that, please.
So the last bullet on slide 16, when we were talking about evaluating the staffing formulas, we know that we're facing a significant deficit for FY17, and that we'll need to review all of our staffing formulas as we head into that budget process. So we were really trying to foreshadow here where we're headed in terms of needing to review all those formulas. And we also wanted to make sure, when we look at this, that we're aware of how different types of programs and staffing formulas impact each other. So really looking at them collectively.
So you're gathering data and looking to consider how that applies ultimately to what we do, our budget, and when we do our budgeting in the fall? Is that the essence of the question?
I, I think two things, and that is evaluating these new formulas and how they've affected our overall system. How, has the money, in terms of our allocation this year, did it work? Where did that money go, those additional resources? Finally, looking at, I think one of the tough things that we're gonna have to face down the road is, do we keep the minimum class size at 17? You know, I think that's something that we'll have to wrestle with potentially. So we'll have to look at all of that and determine impact with regard to resources in the coming year.
So it's not specifically the staffing formula for needs-based staffing formula or special education or necessarily any of those, just the general, the general staffing formula? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move ahead now. We have Ms. Schultz, followed by Mrs. Strauss, and Mr. Velkoff, then Mr. Moon and Ms. Hines.
Okay, I have a very, I have a couple of points, but my first one is a very simple question. When you say, Dr. Pajardo, you know, we're refining the numbers, you know, you're trying to get better with the numbers. I gotta ask very fundamentally, how are you doing that, and what numbers are you using to get better at knowing who's in school right now and what the numbers are gonna be September 7th, or 8th, or 9th, or whatever that day is?
So, let me call upon my good friend, Jeff Plattenberg.
Because I've never asked that question before.
Absolutely. It's, it's foreign to me. So Jeff, can you take a, tell us what you're doing and what your staff is doing to better refine our numbers?
What we're doing is, we're looking at this entire process. You know, what you heard earlier from the presentation was the acceleration of everything that we were going through, all of the different processes. What that afforded was the opportunity for the communication and collaboration really to expand. And we identified not only the impact ultimately in the principals and really in the classroom on the students, but we also back-ended it. And we looked at what the impact was on us in terms of our initial projections, our forecasting. And this is all tying in at the confluence of our revision and redoing of our whole demographic system. So what we did was, in this process, we identified a lot of the workflow components and when they came in, and who was reporting out that data, and why it was taking the length of time that it was taking for, because everybody had to back everything up, and it really allowed us to evaluate even further, deeper layers of the onion, if you will, and see the origin of that data and the impact of it to improve some of the accuracy. I think Susan wants to add to it.
I, I do want to add another piece, too. So that's the projection process. What we're trying to improve is also how to get to our actual enrollment, what's happening over the summer before school actually starts. So one of the changes we've made, and we're asking the schools to have their student information operators to come in, the individuals that actually register the students and actually remove students from their particular school if they're moving on to a different school, we're asking them to come in and update the system on a weekly basis. Because typically, most of the updates don't happen until August, and then we're scrambling to make everything work a little bit later in the process. So we've asked to have those folks come in, starting middle of July, on a weekly basis to update the system, so we know where we are compared to what we had projected for that particular school.
One other thing that, in terms, beyond the methodology that's being worked on right now in our system for projections, we've also provided through the staffing process the five-year analysis. So that, I think, was very instructive during the staffing process. So not only-
Five years back?
Yes.
Wow.
Okay, five years back. So that means we were able to, we provided data that looked at the projection and the actual for the four previous years, plus the current projection, no actual, obviously, but that does provide a lot more, I think, understanding or awareness, or enlightens the conversation about staffing. Is our trend really commensurate with where our projections have been? And so that's something I think that's been helpful, both through the regional offices and all these folks sitting at the end of the table.
I believe that is the answer I was looking for. And that has been three and a half years of, look, look at what happened, look at what we said was gonna happen, and compare, and check our work. Did what we say is gonna happen, happen, and what actually happened, and what's the trend over time? And that is precisely what needs to happen. I'm hoping that that makes its way, that's what I've been advocating, to get into the CIP, so you can see a trend growth over time at the individual school level. Because it doesn't matter what we do at a whole district level, it matters what happens for these principals and all the rest of our principals, what happens in their school. It matters to their parents, to their teachers, to their staffing needs at a school level. Okay, so that's question number one. Question number two is, and Ms. Case, I'm not gonna call you out, being my principal, as, as an individual parent, but I am concerned about the notion around, and having been the ACSD liaison for, for three years, about doing knee-jerk de-staffing based on, well, a certain number of, you know, sixth graders are graduating who have an IEP, and it looks like we can't, you know, hold on to staff. I mean, that, that to me is a staffing fluctuation at this point that seems incredibly premature because we can't possibly know what the needs are going to be in the fall, and to de-staff somebody who's working within, you know, you know, a school culture, and say, well, we don't have quite enough IEPs to support it, doesn't anticipate what the next population's gonna be, especially with full-day kindergarten, full-day Mondays, you know, we just, we don't know. And so why de-staff things around students with disabilities, like, you know, social workers or something like that, on a sheer number of IEPs, as if that's the only driving force of the need? So that's question number two. And then just-
You want us to answer question number two first?
I do, I do, but the other two points are small, so you can just add those on. One, I thought, I heard you say, Dr. Pajardo, that community use drives staffing, or part of the staffing, so you can answer that. And then, what is the parent response to combo classes? Because I've experienced, I haven't experienced it as a parent, but I've been in a school that's had it, and I'm just wondering what the response is.
Okay, I'll, I'll start. When we look at the staffing formulas, the staffing formula impacted by community use is our custodial formula. So our custodial formula looks at the number of students, it also takes into account square footage, which does include temporary classrooms, temporary buildings, and the community use impact on the school. That was the easiest of those questions.
Yeah, I think the second one had to do with IEPs and just, and I think Kathleen alluded to this earlier, as we've moved up the staffing- alluded to this earlier, as we've moved up the staffing process by two months, some of the lessons learned has been, oh, we've got to now accelerate and move up some of our programmatic decisions in keeping with that, because, for example, IEPs, AAP programming, so we're looking at that. We know that that was not perfect this year because of the, the change in the timeline, so we're having to be very thoughtful about where we de-staff and where we don't, because a lot, a lot of that information was accessible in the same timeline that the other, you know, that we moved staffing. Would you all agree with that? I know we've talked about that as a, as a learning we've had this year.
And I just wanted to add to that is, as a principal, we don't make the de-staff decisions, they are made for us. We have the unpleasant task of delivering the news. But what we also do is, we make sure we talk to our colleagues, because when we have really valued members of our staff, we want them to go to a really, really good place that fits their needs as well as the employee. So it's never done easily, it's, it's a difficult thing to do. But in the past, I've been on the receiving end, and I've gone out to recruit de-staffs. I know of like three on my staff right now that are amazing staff numbers, members that were de-staffed, but we were in a growth model. At that point, we were, it was a boundary change, and so we grew considerably, and I knew I had vacancies, so I was out there recruiting those de-staffs, because you do want them to go to a nice place. And one happened to be a former student teacher that I was able to get back to our school. So we do look at that and we do recruit them, but we also go within the parameters. If they're saying we don't have the position, we want that person to get in a really good place. So it, it's a hard thing to just say, well, if you wait and it shows up, then you have rights back, because that, that's a hard thing, too.
But as I understand it, if they take a position someplace else through the early staffing model, and then everything sifts out, then you're stuck because they either have committed someplace else, or if, if they come back, then they leave the other place high and dry. And so I'm particularly sensitive about us, you know, if the numbers in the school haven't changed dramatically to say, you know, and I, I know it's not you, I know it's, I'm really directing it over here, is that if the staffing, if the staffing formula, but it's, but it's, it's, it's repeated elsewhere, and if the staffing formula is saying, well, you know, you, you don't have quite the, the students with disabilities population, we know over time, our population really isn't changing, it's a very static population, it's very predictable. So, you know, one or two or three or whatever numbers of kids having an IEP versus a 504, I don't think should be determining de-staffing, and that's the part that I'm asking you all to look at on behalf of the kids with disabilities, is, you know, once you get good staff that has that to upend that based on, you know, a, a student prediction numbers, which we're still wrestling with, I want us to be very, very careful about that.
Okay, I think point, that point's very well, well taken. Do you mind talking just briefly, Kathy, about combination classes? You actually referenced one that you had created with kindergarten and first.
Absolutely. There was some hesitation from some parents, and it surprised me, it was from kindergarten parents versus from first grade. And I kind of, yes, and I personally made those phone calls because I think the communication is the key whenever you're making some changes within the regular classroom setting. And so I personally made phone calls to all of those parents that have children that were identified able to make that switch after school has started, because taking a kindergartner away from their very first kindergarten teacher is, is very traumatic. And so I thought that was quite interesting, that their comment was, I didn't want, I don't want my child to miss out on the typical kindergarten experience by being in a classroom with first graders. I don't want them to jump to first grade, I really want them to have that experience in kindergarten. And so, being very creative with the master schedule, I was able to enable the classroom teacher to be with kindergarten for almost two and a half hours alone with the kindergartners, and then almost two and a half hours to be alone with the first graders. So the first graders went to lunch with first grade, recess with first grade, specials with first grade, and so did kindergarten. And that allowed the IA and the classroom teacher to kind of follow each group and flip-flop throughout the, the school day, to really give each one of those groups of students the, the privilege of being a first grader in that first grade experience with the rest of the first graders and kindergarten to, to experience the same. So that was the hesitation between, in this combo class, and every parent was thrilled with the outcome of their student having that experience. In fact, I have this big old long list, this was two years ago, and so for this year, well, it was last year, and then for this year, I have a big list, please put my child in the combo class. And I'm like, it isn't a given thing that there'll be a combo class, every year is different. So that was a very positive experience for the primary combo class, and I think that's key.
That's why combo classes are still listed as, as an option, because in certain cases, like the one you just described, it can be really beneficial for everyone, particularly if you have a master teacher and a master principal, but a master teacher that, that knows how to differentiate the curriculum, it can be a rich experience for the students. So, but not all teachers, I think, could handle that complexity. So it really gets right down to the principals, giving them the flexibility where they know that they have a staff or a staff member that can handle that well. And we also have, our IS departments also prepared to help with those kinds of combination classes from an instructional and curriculum perspective.
Okay.
And I did call upon IS, and I called upon colleagues and learned from their experiences. And then I also had staff from another school to come in and reevaluate, are we doing everything that we can for all of the students in the classes? So a lot of support is, is needed with those.
Okay, so I'm going to move us along here. We have at least four board members that still would like to speak, now five. Do I hear six? Okay. And between now and two o'clock, we can finish our discussion and, and we can have lunch, right? Because at two o'clock, we have another conversation to have. So I'm just kind of setting the context a little bit for my colleagues. So, Ms. Strauss, followed by Mr. Velkoff.
First of all, thank you very much, and I really appreciate everybody's conversations and input and hearing from our principals as well, because staffing is always a complex piece. So I am very grateful for the very heavy lifting in accelerating the whole hiring process. As I've been out in my schools and talking with parent groups and principals, our ability to hang on to and hire our very best teachers, because we know we have a compensation issue, it has been much appreciated, being able to hire early. So, and I know that, that was incredibly hard work, I think it was an excellent decision, because I think it has saved the quality of our workforce in many instances, so I mean, kudos. And I know how hard that was. And I very much appreciated the, the acknowledgement that every school is different, every community is different, and it's different because the children, and, and children's needs vary year to year, it depends on who's with us. What parents want, the, the different passions and talents of your school staff every year, and maximizing on, you know, the talent you have in your school. So every school year, every school needs, child needs, is going to be different, and that makes huge complex issue, meeting the individual needs of children. So clearly, that, that's just, and it's, and it is harder at the elementary school than it is at a high school, just because of the way, particularly in those primary grades, kids are more often in a homeroom setting. So departmentalizing where we can do, usually at a fifth and sixth grade, and often we do that so well, you don't always have those options in your, in your primary grade. So it is a complex issue. And in order for us to accelerate the hiring, maximize the monies, and particularly the additional money that we put in, I wish we had a little more money for the overly large class sizes, but, you know, I tried and it didn't work. But in order to maximize that in the early hiring, we also had to commit to our schools that we were not going to change the staffing formula once we had put it out there, because you can't, you can't change the staffing formulas in May or June if you are allowing this early hiring process, which I think has really benefited everybody. So we had to stand still, let this go forward, and then evaluate what we are doing. I'm very pleased to hear about the summer work that's going to go on and trying to figure out exactly how many kids we're going to have, and having our data processing people in our elementary schools, particularly updating it every, every week. And those of us who have high-need schools, where the population shifts are constant, even until the last day of school, I have some of those, and then the schools that are in between, where you kind of know where you're going, and then you have schools where you just have real estate issues that go on constantly, you have communities that are turning over, you have schools where you have international populations just simply based on, on State Department, on World Bank, on embassies, and you just don't know what you're going to have, and getting people, please come in and register. Every year I have, please, and they say, oh, I thought we just walked in the door in September, and I go, we will take you and we love you, but then we have these staffing issues. So, you know, the complexity of that. The issue of IEPs, we never know, the issue of AAP identification. I know our facilities people beg us, please, could we get all of these trains to intersect? So I think this year, I'm hoping we will have a better intersection, and again, working school by school, community by community, I mean, I sit down, talk with real estate agents and say, what do you think we're going to get in September? And I know our facilities and Kevin Sinead is working very hard on building a much closer software package where we can actually look at these trends. So thank you for all of your fabulous work. I've already had conversations in schools, on, on the one hand, where we are making decisions earlier on, but it also is creating angst, where I know I have some communities that say, no, no, I, we'll, we'll take a slightly larger class size so we can keep this particular focus in our school. And, and then I have other schools, no, no, we just want class size. So again, it's, every community is a little different, and trying to stretch and push ourselves, trying to help have not-too-over-the-top conversations, you know, give us a little time, we're working on it, we're working on it. It's, it's very hard. The, let me see, I had one other piece. Oh, issue of multi-age in combination classes. And for those of you who have not been at this for a very, very long time, before SOLs, we actually had more combination classes at the upper grade levels, and they worked fine because we departmentalized, and, you know, math instruction was delivered based on where you were, English, what have you, but because of SOLs, it's very hard to do that at the upper grade levels. It is, there is a lot of good literature on early childhood, where multi-age for very young children, there are wonderful ways that you can deliver instruction. One of the interesting pieces that I think we may want to watch over time, Montessori in early childhood is becoming, great deal of interest in our communities, particularly our families that are coming from other parts of the world where they are used to, Montessori for early childhood. I predict that we are going to see interesting conversations on those best practices that Montessori can show for very young children. It kind of dissipates as the kids get over, older, but I will be interested to hear how that one goes, particularly in kindergarten and first grade, where there is high interest in doing multi-age for that. So anyway, thank you, kudos for the tremendous heavy lifting. We hold our breath at our, our overly large class sizes and the resources that we have put in, but at least I think we are regularizing how we're doing that, and we will do our very best. I would like to see a little few more resources, but anyway, thank you. And I really appreciate the input from our, our principals, because you know what it's like every year in trying to make all of this work for every child, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. I have Mr. Velkoff, followed by Mr. Moon.
So I want to extend a compliment, ask two questions, and then plant a seed. So the compliment is, I'm very appreciative to everybody in the school system for being willing to reexamine and change and optimize this process, so it's just terrific. First question is, it sounds like counting the number of students in a classroom is an easy data point to collect, but it sounds to me like that's not necessarily telling me the whole story about the need in the classroom. How would I or the public be able to distinguish between a situation where that number looks like something, how do I, how do I distinguish between when that's working well and where there, as opposed to an unmet need that needs to be addressed?
That's a great question, you know, in terms of things, I think our principals, you know, would say, I'm going to tee this off for you all, you know, part of that is that ongoing communication that principals actually have with their community all along, so that a community is not surprised. You know, these are the needs, this is what we've talked about, these are our, you know, this is our student population, here's the trend that's happening in schools, to just talk about that one time a year is probably not a good thing. And as a former principal, that, we've talked about that more often than not. I think the other piece regarding that is, in, when there are, when the staffing is approaching certain numbers, that is also where it's the proactive communication, not the reactive. So we are approaching this, here are our transparency and our thinking process, we have an opportunity, it looks like we'll be allocated an instructional assistant, this is how this can play out, what are your thoughts on that? And then, I think, going forward, but I, you know, principals, please.
Being in this situation quite often, I, I think the key is, your, your best tool of communication is your parents, and your parents speaking with other parents, because that's what happens at the poolside during the summer, is, well, my child was in a classroom last year in fourth grade, and we had thirty-three students in the classroom, and my child's, you know, soared and did very well, and did not feel like they were in an overcrowded classroom. My child's needs were met individually, the teacher responded to all, all of my needs. So I, I think the principals having the communication with the parents, and then the parents in return, sharing that with the community. At least in my community, we have that a lot. You know, they, they speak with each other and they support the school when they feel like they need to support the school. And if they don't, then they come straight to us and talk to us about any of their concerns or needs, and, and I like that, I like it when they come. So I, I do believe, as one individual, individual parent is not going to be able to look into a classroom, and we would never be able to communicate what that classroom really truly looks like as far as the needs of the students. We can say how many students are in the classroom, but not the needs of the students in that particular classroom. But it's the key of the parent with a student in that classroom being, feeling as if they're in a small group setting, so.
And I don't want to continue on and on, but I was just piggyback on what Kathy said, and each classroom, as with each teacher and each group of students, is very unique, and the numbers don't always tell you the whole picture, nor should they sometimes, because we do respect the confidentiality of our students. And I think as the principals and our teaching staff, we look to see how we can best meet the needs of that group of students in front of us, and we do communicate that. And I know we've been in situations where we do, you know, load those upper grades a little heavier, because you have that flexibility, as Mrs. Strauss talked about, so that those primary grades can look a little smaller in a school that doesn't really have extra resources with needs-based, based staffing or anything like that. We have to do what we can do to make sure that each child's needs are being met, so you can't really ever look at that data and know that's exactly what's happening, because it does depend on each individual classroom, so.
Thank you. My second question has to do with combo classes, and I just want to know, would it be fair to say that the level of experience and skill of a teacher of a combo, combination class is likely to be a little more than the average teacher?
Oh, absolutely. Having, having taught a few combination classes as well and having to assign them, you, you are looking at a teacher who, one, knows the curriculum and both curriculums as well of the grades in which they are teaching, or have some great approximation of, of both, if they know one very well, someone who's organized, who can manage, and who can differentiate, because while you are, you know, working with this group, you know... are, you know, working with this group, you know, you need to be able to do something else that is as rigorous. Not that you're, you know, you're over here just doing busy work, but really meaningful, independent work as well. So, those are strong characteristics that would be considered when assigning a teacher a combination classroom.
Okay. And then finally, like I said, I want to plant a seed, this is not for a response, but for future thought, perhaps for the next board. As I was listening to all the discussion of the de-staffing process, I was kind of wondering whether the current process, whether the pros and cons balance out from the standpoint of principals. And I would suggest that perhaps in the future, if that balance does not work to the benefit of the individual schools and principals, that, you know, that's something perhaps that should be looked at, but I'm not asking for comment right now.
Okay. Moving on then. Mr. Moon, Ms. Hines.
Thank you. I know the lunchtime of 1:30 is upon us, so I'm going to be very brief. One or two questions regarding early hiring. I know today we are focusing on mostly on elementary, but this may relate to secondary, more with the secondary, but let me ask you this. When you talk about early hiring, how early are we talking about? Is that, is that February, March of the year that particular candidate applicant may be working?
Yes. So, actually, with our job fairs in February, we offered, made some early offers to participants in the job fair. So, we were already offering people positions in February.
Okay. My follow-up question, this may be not practical or maybe overly ambitious, but like in other fairs, you know, some, I wouldn't say, I would say more than some, you know, college students after they do their internship during summer, after their junior year, you know, could get job offers, and they accept that very early in their senior year and don't have to worry about applying for, you know, positions and focus on what they want to pursue. In the future, whether, when you see a highly qualified, you know, student teacher who may be doing student teaching with us, well, you just know that such person, you know, we would really want to have, you know, that kind of person to teach with an FCPS, to resort even earlier than early hiring?
So, we haven't done that just yet, but as Dr. Garza knows, I like to say there's opportunities for our consideration of such things as that. Working in, working through this process right now with student teachers, we have the opportunity now to extend that offer to them now in May, as opposed to in late June, as we have done in the past years. But what I hear you saying is almost like an early commitment as well. And it's, and even with the early hires that we made in February, we do couch that with all of this is dependent on enrollment as well, so that we can, in fact, and they're committing to come to us, you know, four months and to stop looking, you know, in other divisions as well. But the consideration for student teachers or other particular positions, sure.
Thank you.
Ms. Hines.
Thank you. Yeah, just a few things. I've gotten some feedback from principals in my district who've been dealing with large classes for a while, and they're very grateful for a couple of things. One definitely being the early hiring. I think they feel like over the years, they have lost people to surrounding school systems that are smaller, able to be lighter on their feet, maybe a little better resourced. And so now they have the ability to sort of lock people in who would like to work in Fairfax County. So, that's great. And also, feeling like that, well, Mr. Plattenberg isn't here yet, but that he has given some of them some reassurance that their, the principal's understanding of the numbers coming in the next year will be taken seriously and taken into account. And so it's that balance between, well, we have a formula that works for everybody, but we also have principals who've been frustrated over the last few years when they see that their own projections were much closer to what happened. And I think that's, they're very grateful for that. It will help when we get to the fall with less of that, having to shift things around at the beginning of the school year, which is very painful. A few questions. I had a question the other day, I was at Terracide Elementary School, they have a brand-new, beautiful building, half of it's done, and we were walking around doing a walkthrough, and one of the parents asked, "So, will we have smaller class sizes now that we have, you know, new classrooms?" And so, it's funny, and everybody in the room, all the other parents, like, "Yeah, isn't that how it works?" And so I think we have to keep explaining to people that the class size issue is about how many teachers we can hire, and it's an operating budget issue. And whether those kids are in the building or in a trailer is the capital issue, right? So, okay, good. I was surprised by the confusion about that. But, you know, we're insiders now, and we don't know what people are thinking. I would say a couple of things. One of my Vienna schools that's been particularly concerned about this, I was at a PTA meeting recently where we talked about the new regulation, and the questions that came up, there were a few, most have been answered, but there was a concern about the effect of AAP, and you principals talked about that a little bit, whether it's AAP center or AAP Level Four in the building, whenever you're kind of counting separately, say you have all of fourth grade, but you're counting separately for staffing, the AAP kids and the Gen Ed kids. And so, for example, one of the questions was, "Well, if we're capping class sizes in core content areas, and we are, the principal is mixing Gen Ed and AAP kids in a core content class, like a math class, right? Will the number of kids be counted as all those kids?" Okay. So, we'll get to the 36 or whatever it is with everyone who's in that room, it's not just AAP, even though at the beginning of the year, we count separately, right? Because, so we'll have third-grade AAP classes for staffing purposes, right? Yeah. So, that's kind of tricky for the principals, I imagine, because you don't necessarily know what those core content groups are going to look like. So, we may end up having to add people to a building because the core content groups will be large?
Dr. Pajardo, speak to the regulation, because in the regulation, it includes AAP to the standard. So, it's not like the Gen Ed core content classes, we have this standard, but AAP can be as big as we want it to be. No, our standard applies, and it says specifically in the regulation, it applies to AAP classes just like any other class. The specific configuration you just talked about is probably unique, so maybe the example has gotten a couple, I saw some people's faces. Bottom line is that the standard is the same.
Okay. I mean, I think-
Was that kind of the essence of what you were speaking to?
Exactly. But I think what happens is, let's say you have an AAP class of 32 kids in their homeroom, right? But then in math, you're pulling in five kids from Jan Ed into that math group, that's the question.
That's why we were specific, and that's led to a lot of the confusion, I think, that currently exists, you know, because the last two years, I think I've talked about this subject matter more, well, about as much as the budget, maybe, maybe not quite as much. But I think this led to a lot of the confusion, because you'll have people come up to, like one of our listening tours, and say, "My child's math class had 35 students in it." Well, I go back to that school, and I look, there's not a single classroom with that many children. So, some of this had to do with configurations. And I get principals are making the decisions that are best, I think, you know, in the best interest of the students they're serving, but it is still hard for us to defend having 35 kids in any core content classroom. So, that's why this regulation is very specific to any core class or any core classroom configuration. So, you could not do that any longer.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful, and we'll hope that that's how it works out. I think in general, my advocacy might be that we, if we have not yet sort of taken a look specifically at what AAP does to staffing, you know, because you can have these strange anomalies in a building where you've got one third-grade class with 18 kids, and then another third-grade class with 32, and that's because we count AAP and Gen Ed differently.
And I may have mentioned before, in studying this issue, it's very clear that our AAP schools, the schools that have AAP centers, they seem, the preponderance of our schools that seem to have challenges with regard to class size, they typically have an AAP center or some kind of specialized program, like an immersion program. So, that does make it very, much more difficult, I think, for our schools to staff.
Okay. Thank you. I want to talk a little bit about the money. I am disappointed that we didn't add the extra $1 million set aside. I appreciate Ms. Strauss for bringing that up. I understand, we're looking at some, you know, tough times in 2017. But talking to the principals about this, I think they are worried that we actually may not have the money we need to implement this.
So, when we look at the staffing reserve, we're going to look at the staffing reserve as a whole while we added funding to the staffing reserve. If we need more positions to address class size and just the funding that we added this year, right, we'll look at the reserve as a whole, so we can still use positions from the reserve, not just the new ones added.
And then the other change in the staffing reserve is, if the school is not meeting their projections by the 10th instructional day, we wouldn't typically pull positions from that school, but we will this year, because we are probably going to be needing those positions to have to address large class size. So, we're all going to be looking at the staffing reserve as a whole and how we allocate and pull positions from there.
Right. Thank you. Can I have just one more?
Just to get your comment out, and then I'm going to move us on.
I will wrap up. I appreciate it, thank you. And I would just say, we are looking at spending $4 million to address very large classes, and I think that's better than what we've done so far. All the changes in the regulations and practices will help. But I understand that actually to reduce class size by a half a student in elementary would cost us $8 million, I just got, right. And so, I would, my thought would be, so if we do this two years in a row, $4 million this year, $4 million in that, next year, we might as well have put $8 million in the budget to reduce class size by a half a child across the board. So, my thought is, just my advocacy going forward, is that we put that $8 million in our budget every year, even though it's a tough ask, but that's my thought.
Okay. Thank you. So now, Ms. Evans, and then Ms. McLaughlin, and then lunch.
That's going to get me going faster. I want to echo what other people said about the early hiring. I think that's a win-win-win, and thank you all for getting that done, and, because I know that took, that took a lot of extra effort. My one question really is for our principals, and, you know, thank you for being here. Our new regulation here, the new guidelines, what do you see from a school level? What's the practical impact of this going to be for you? Do you anticipate you'll be configuring your classes differently? Will you anticipate you'll be getting more IAs, or is it too early for you to tell what this is going to mean for you at the school level?
Yes.
Yeah, all of the above.
I think it's a little early. I mean, I am anticipating that there would be the IA support that would be helpful. And we would also have to look, do we have space for another classroom? We're a space-challenge school, so that's going to impact too. You just can't add classrooms if you don't have space. So, that will come into play, and then using your resources, as Kathy has done in the past, in a, you know, in a creative way, we would do that, because the goal is, for those core contents, you want children to have those small groups that teachers can meet them where they are and move them along. So, it's going to be interesting. You know, we don't have all the answers, but that's what we do, is we problem-solve as we go through with one of our, you know, non-critical and creative thinking strategies.
Okay. All right. And I'm just going to add, it's a moving target, and every year it's a moving target. This is not a new moving target, it's just a slightly different way of looking at the challenge. And so, yes, it is way too early, and yes, it's going to be a puzzle that we're going to try to put together throughout the summer, and the kids are going to get the support one way or another, so.
All right. Thanks very much. Ms. McLaughlin.
Trying to be succinct, I just, I really appreciated the line of thinking that Ms. Hines was bringing up about how we do the separate staffing configurations, or just like the overall, you know, the formula for AAP versus, you know, the general population, and just drawing on my own family's experience where my son was at a center, and how they were trying to figure out that really large class sizes, but not enough to tip it. And so, for third and fourth year, third and fourth grade, they had probably 34, 35 kids. And in trying to give those kids finally a break, in the fifth grade, the principal kind of did an inverse and said, "Let me see if I can bring down that number for this year of those fifth graders in the AAP program." And so it became, they got the smaller class, and then another age group ended up with the larger class sizes, and then it reverted back. I didn't mind it, because his needs were being met, but I know it's a county-wide problem, and so I guess, Dr. Garza, I don't necessarily want to put anybody on the spot now, but I feel like I still don't understand the benefits of doing it this way, where we have the formula for your AAP center, and then you've got it for your base population.
No, it's the same, it's the same standard.
No, no, I know it's the same standard, but we're not, as Pat was saying, they're not counted as a whole group. They're, you're doing a formula saying, "Here's our AAP population, what's our formula for staffing? Here's our base population, here's our formula for standing." But as we know, if you took the whole group together, you might actually find that you can kind of have a little more even staffing among the building as a whole, in terms of keeping them separate for their calculations.
So, let me add, we did kind of run some different scenarios, and in most cases, schools lost resources by combining them because of the rounding issues with the formulas. Because the formula standard is the same, calculating it separately actually generates additional resources. And I think sometimes it's the grouping of the students within those different levels that's probably causing the large class sizes at the upper levels. But we've had schools where, you just said, the inverse. The AAP classes are much smaller than your Gen Ed classes. So, I think it all depends on the grouping of students that are at that particular school. So, I think having the staffing reserve positions actually gives us more flexibility to address the large class sizes, whether or not it's in your Gen Ed classes or in your AAP classes.
So, maybe then what this comes down to, and I know, Dr. Garza, you keep working on this, which is fidelity of best practices. So, we might have some principals who've kind of figured out, how do we, you know, make this work best with, you know, maximizing as small a class sizes as we can between the two populations? But, you know, I'd almost like to see central administration where you can identify that among our 150-some-odd elementary school principals, where they've kind of figured out how to do those calculations, that it gets shared with the other principals where they've got these combined programs within the building. Because I really respect our principals that you're here to help with instruction and management, and it's not necessarily about mental gymnastics on calculating, you know, where you put your staff. So, it's just a thought that that might be something to come out of it, is that communication and identifying the best practices, and almost giving them, the principals, maybe a more robust framework to say, "Here are some of the scenarios we've found over time, and here's some of the best models we've done with that."
And that is a huge piece of where our region assistant superintendents would come in with working with principals and being the go-between between IS and best practices, and then that community and the teaching staff, as well as the principals as well.
True, but since we have five regions, you might have in one region where they've kind of perfected the approach, and the other region is going to hear about it unless they're in a meeting with Dr. Lockard, and all five of them are talking about. So, I'm just, I'm just trying to find ways that, when we identify it, and then it gets pushed back out to the regional superintendents who can bring it to their principals. So, maybe it comes to you, Dr. Lockard, too.
Well, that's an excellent point. There's a couple of examples that we've already done, including a couple recent all-county principal meetings, where we didn't necessarily get into staffing per se, but we looked at scheduling, and we had some principals that we solicited who had some kind of innovative and unique practices to share with other principals, just what you're talking about, Ms. McLaughlin. So, thank you.
All right. Does anyone have any final comments? Dr. Garza? Go back, Ms. Schultz, quickly.
Ms. Case, Ryan T. can ride the bus home with William.
I just want to, just very, very, just very quickly wanted to say that, you know, I want to compliment the staff, our principals have done a great job, and, but I also think it's important to know that this is not done yet. As was pointed out, I think, by our principals earlier, it's not perfect. I think it's definitely a step in the right direction. I think we'll have to continue to monitor it throughout the coming year. I think part of the challenges we're going to have next year is, as we continue to grow every day throughout the school year, how does this translate at the school level? every day throughout the school year, how does this translate at the school level? You know, how do we meet our obligation to our community, our parents, but also manage it throughout the school year? So, we'll continue just to communicate and perfect it over time, but I definitely think it's a step in the, in the right direction. So, I want to thank you all. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you all very much. Yes, this work session is adjourned. We will, yes, we will have a 20-minute lunch and start coming back to the table at 10:00 after because I know then we never really start at 10:00 after, so we'll shoot for that. Thank you.